Wild Group of 112 Westwood Drive regarding a two-by-twelve bump out of a house. Then at 6:55, we go into a public hearing on a variance and special permit for Julie and Wayne Zudema. And then at 7:25, we have another public hearing and special permit for 40 Main Street at Iwahib regarding the placement of gas tanks and gas pumps. And then finally, at 7:45 PM, we have an update of the Five Leaves apartment complex at 152-158 Main Street here in town. And then after that, we'll have all the new business and adjournment. So before we start discussing the minutes, could everybody introduce themselves, starting with Fidelis?
Fidelis, Ongabweke.
March Coney.
Diane Trapasso.
Mike Young.
Bill Zelenek.
Tom Earls.
Okay. Has everybody had a chance to read through the minutes of the March meeting?
Mr. Chair, may I make a recommendation? Since there were only three people present who are now sitting on the board, and I was absent that day, and since Ms. Banks was the acting chair, vice chair, should we defer, since she's on vacation, until she has a chance to review the minutes? That would be my suggestion. But it's up to you, sir.
Does that make sense? Any input, feedback on that?
What's the requirement?
You should wait. There were only...
Free seating.
Yeah, we had three people.
No, there were only two, only two from this meeting present.
I was absent, so I have to abstain, so...
Right, so you're correct. That would have to wait until the next meeting.
Correct.
Okay. Do we need a motion on that?
No.
Okay. All right, we will defer on the minutes until the August meeting of the board. Okay, so that brings us to, well, in a couple of minutes, the determination at 112 Westwood Drive, Daniel J. and Marcia Wild Group. The applicant is requesting approval to add a two-by-twelve bump out on the front of their house. Do we have anybody here representing the Wild Groups?
Yeah. I'm Dan Wild Group. This is Bob...
Wild Group.
Thanks, man.
I was gonna say, from my high school German, I think it's Wild Group.
We're sorry, Mr....
Yeah. Okay, Mr. Wild Group, would you like to talk about your project and what you're gonna be doing?
Sure.
Okay. We have a microphone over there.
Okay, thanks. Can't hear me. My wife and I live at 112 Westwood Drive. We've lived there for probably twenty-five years. And it's time, we'd like to kind of give our house a little curb appeal, so it's not so much about the size of the bump out as we're gonna change the appearance of the front of the house. So we'd like to bump out our master bedroom about two feet, and it's the inside, or the width of it will be about twelve feet. So it's gonna more or less change the appearance of the front of the house and give us about twenty square feet inside, so...
We have plans and drawings here. Is everybody look through these?
Yes, may I? I hate to interject all the time.
Go ahead, March. Your microphone.
On the application that we've received, it shows the zoning district as rural residential. Actually, it's suburban residential. And on the maximum number of stories allowed, as well as existing and proposed, that should be two and not three. So could we have Mr. Wild Gruber initial those changes? And do you have a mailing address and telephone number in your file for Mr. Wild Gruber?
No, we do not. We just have the property address.
Yeah, because this is a quasi-legal board, as everybody knows, so we have to get...
The mailing address is the same.
Great. Okay.
Yeah. 112 Westwood Drive.
Do you have any telephone number or anything where you can reach? All right.
Thank you.
Does anybody else have any other questions for Mr. Wild Group?
Just something slight, and that's on the minimum lot coverage. So you have the proposed as the same, but it's gonna change slightly, right?
I wouldn't... Well, it is the landscaped area in front of the house that would just be, there's a sidewalk there that will be kind of pushed up, I guess.
Yeah. So...
Yeah.
Yeah, because you're adding a two-by-twelve to the front, so that's, you know, it's a slight increase.
Right.
You know, so I was just wondering what the number was, because I was going through your form, and I think that should have been there as well.
I think...
Is that the fourteen point four five?
Fourteen point four five. The existing is fourteen point two five.
The fourteen point two five is the existing.
No, that one.
Oh.
Yeah.
Oh, you mean on the lot area?
Yes.
I don't think that affects...
Oh, okay.
It doesn't affect the lot area.
Yeah, I was reading it as lot coverage, okay.
Yeah, no, that's the same.
Yeah.
No, just a small bump out.
Small addition on a non-conforming lot that will increase lot coverage slightly, but still under the fifteen percent required by zoning. Any further questions, or barring no further questions, do we have a motion?
Uh... You want to go, Diane, or?
You can go, Mike.
Oh, thanks.
You can go.
You could go. You want me to go in here?
I'll make a motion to grant a determination to allow the construction of a small bump-out addition on the front of the home and a roof over the existing stairs as shown on the plan, actually, I guess on the tape survey prepared by Jalbert Engineering, job number 93699 dated December 1st, 1993. Since the determination does not intensify the existing or create additional nonconformings, and the owner may apply for a building permit for described activities as shown on the attached survey forward.
Diane, on this, can you... No, we can't make it out.
Um, according to the drawings, but I can't make out the...
On the architectural concept.
Job number? No, no.
No.
Oh, that's...
On the architectural drawing.
Drawing Board Incorporated?
Yeah, but it doesn't... We can just say...
I mean, received by the planning, you know, received by the Zoning Board of Appeals on June 9th, 2008, but the name of the drawing is The Drawing Board, Inc. I don't know.
No address, no number.
We refer to watch Albert's job number.
Yeah, that I did.
Yeah, that was a plot, a tape survey that was done.
I would just do, and the architectural plan submitted stamped "Received" June 19th, 2018 by Zoning Board of Appeals prepared by the Drawing Board Incorporated.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
One second.
We have a second?
A second.
Okay. All right, we have a motion that was seconded to grant the determination to the Wild Group family at 112 Westwood Drive. Thank you very much, and good luck with the project.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. All in favor?
Thank you.
All right.
I just want to make sure we don't forget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. It's over six zero, all right?
Eighteen.
Okay.
Thank you.
Jean?
Yes.
We have fifteen minutes.
Okay.
Before we start the public hearing. Is that enough time for you to talk about?
I think so.
The update on Five Leaves.
Yes, I think so.
Good idea.
So some of you were on the board, some of you were staff at the time, and some of you were not present when the Five Leaves project was approved. So just to bring, I think for the benefit of Mr. Zelenak, Five Leaves is a 40B project, which is an affordable housing development that was approved for 152 Main Street, and it was under Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 40B, which is complex. Oh, you're aware of it? Okay, that's good. So this application was approved back two years ago now, 2016. The permit's valid for three years, and they are ready to start construction. So we received all the final drawings and final plans last week, and myself and the building commissioner have been reviewing those. So in the course of reviewing those, I went back through the decision and found that one of the conditions was that we send the application and plans back to Davis Square Architects and to Beals and Thomas for review to make sure all of the conditions of the permit are reflected on the current plan. Well, this is something that we normally do in-house, but I sent them an email asking for an estimate to review the plan, and I received so far just one back from Beals and Thomas, and it was $3,000, just to review the plan. Again, something that we normally do in-house. So I contacted Judy Barrett, who was our consultant at the time, and as you will recall, I was out on medical leave, and it was unsure when I would be returning. And so she said she put those conditions in there to safeguard the town in the event that either A, I didn't return to work, or they started construction prior to my return. So thank the Lord, I am here and healthy and quite able to do my job. And so I said to Judy, I didn't really feel comfortable charging the applicant for something that the town pays me to do with taxpayer funds. And she said, no, she completely understood, as long as it was something that we normally did in-house and we were comfortable. She suggested rewriting the conditions and asking the board to vote it as a minor modification. So that's what I've done on pages three and four, which I sent to you in advance. I've taken those very same conditions and deleted the sections about, we shall send it out to Beals and Thomas and to Davis Square, and I've changed that to say that basically in the event the building commissioner or myself feels there's something that we can't review in-house, that the applicant shall pay for the cost of those reviews, and we'll have Beals and Thomas or Davis Square. In fact, when I spoke to the building commissioner, he may want Davis Square, the architect, to review some part of the architecuals as we're under construction, and I've spoken to the applicant about that, and they are fine. And just for the record, the applicant didn't come to me with this request. This was my... Excuse me. Thank you. This was my request, because I just didn't feel right in doing, you know, charging somebody for what we normally do in the course of everyday business here.
So you're helping us taxpayers save some money?
Yeah, helping the applicant, who is a taxpayer basically as well. So I'm asking that, and so Ms. Barrett said the appropriate course of action would be for the ZBA to vote that this is a minor modification and to vote to accept the new conditions as drafted. All right.
Mr. Chair, may I ask a question? You know me, I always have questions.
Absolutely.
We had some funds that they used, that Beals and Thomas and Davis Square Architects had to put in reserve for some of their other... Have all of those funds been used, or have those been returned?
All except for $24.
Okay, so they have been used, 'cause I, you know...
Yes, because...
They had been in there and doing all of it.
All the reviews during the public hearing process, that was used for.
Okay. And, all right, so, and they don't have to agree to this, or it's just something that we have to agree to as a board?
You have to agree to it.
Yeah. Now...
And the applicant is fine with it, obviously, it's saving them money. I have spoken to them about it.
Absolutely. So would the board have to authorize both you and the building commissioner to do onsite conditions?
That's correct.
To see that everything is there?
And to act as, basically, we're acting as your agents. So if we see something that we need assistance with, we'll know that, you know, we have the authority to hire Beals and Thomas or Davis Square.
And these inspections will be done during the normal course of your business day, the town's business day?
That's correct. And also, it's controlled construction, so the architect will have to submit certified reports. And also, Mike Landreid from Graves Engineer has been hired to submit reports.
Right.
So I will be getting copies of those reports, and I'll be providing that to the board as we go along too, by means of updates.
Now, in any way, shape, or form, could the town be culpable for anything? Not that I expect you or our building commissioner not to pick up on everything.
No, I would say not. I mean, we're, you know, we're doing what we normally do.
It would be no culpability on the part of the town.
No, we're carrying out our responsibilities as we would with any other application.
Okay. Very confident you and our building commissioner will do an excellent job.
Well, thank you.
So...
So if everyone's in agreement, then we would need two votes, and one would be to consider this request a minor modification, would be your first.
All right, so I'll make a motion that we honor the request for the minor modification as detailed in the information provided. And then we need a motion to authorize our town administrator, uh, town planner and our building commissioner to do the necessary reviews during normal business hours.
I would just say normal reviews.
Normal reviews. Okay.
And then also, after you do that, then I'll give you the second one, which will be to vote on the revised condition.
So that's the motion.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Opposed, so moved.
And then the second part of that would be to modify the conditions for NBM Realty Five Leaves as written on pages three and four of the memorandum provided by the town planner dated July 12th, 2018.
So moved.
Do you have a second on that?
Second.
Okay. Motion made and seconded, all in favor?
Six zero.
Thank you. I'm gonna go call the applicant, because I told him that they might wanna come at the end of the meeting.
Go feed your husband.
Oh, my husband's out of luck tonight.
Gee. Wow.
Hey Rebecca, have you got all these returns? Okay, we'll be opening the public hearing now. Our co-chair will read the notice.
In accordance with provisions of Master General Law Chapter 40A, Section 11 of the zoning by-- of the zoning board of appeals, will hold a public hearing at the Center Office Building located at 301 Main Street on July 18, 2018, at 6:55 PM on the application of Julie and Wayne Sudema. The applicant is requesting a variance from Chapter 19 of the zoning bylaw relief from intensity regulations to permit a building addition within the 20-foot setback, as well as a special permit pursuant to Chapter 20, Section 20.085 of the zoning bylaw to expand, change, or alter pre-existing non-conforming use in structure for the property located at 114 Lane 10. The applicant is proposing a 20-by-24 addition onto the existing house in a 12-by-16 deck. A copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard in this petition should appear at the time and place designated. Elizabeth Banks, Clerk, Sturbridge Zoning Board of Appeals.
Okay. Thank you very much, Diane. In the packet we have with the application, we have some correspondence from various town boards that I'll summarize. This is a matter of public record, and if any citizen wants to read any of these letters, they're available at the planning board office. We have a letter from our town planner, Jean Gubon, who summarizes the conditions of the lot and the project, and summarizes her letter by saying, "I do believe in this instance, the application does meet the criteria for grant of a variance. I also have no concerns with the special permit requested as no new non-conformities will be created." We also have other correspondence. We have a letter from our fire department that the fire department has no major or special concerns, just the ordinary requirements for smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, and there are no other questions or issues by our fire department. We also have correspondence from... Let me see. Nope, that's not anything I need to read. Our police department says they have no public safety concerns with the variance and special permit for 114 Lane 10. And Conservation, again summarizes the wetlands issues, but summarizes by saying, "Based on the scope of the project, I would not anticipate any major concerns with it. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this project." That's Conservation. And then our building inspector says, "I have reviewed the file and the proposed changes for the subject property. Based on the information supplied to this office, I have no objection. In fact, it's one of the few times that it appears to be a legit hardship. We recommend the applicant be able to proceed to acquire the necessary approvals." So that's what our townsfolk have to say. And who do we have with us this evening?
My name is Rauf Benkarius with Alpha Omega Engineering. I'm covering up for Bob Murphy. He has to go on another meeting, actually.
Okay, thank you. Okay, would you like to present the project to the board?
Well, as you said, it's just a proposed addition. There is no increase in encouragement in the setback than the existing one, and it meets all the requirements for the special requirement for the variance. Does the board have any question regarding the project, regarding the design?
Okay, board members?
First of all, on the letter from Conservation, have you spoken to the Conservation agent?
I believe Bob Murphy did. And they are outside the 100-foot buffer, so the whole work could be outside the jurisdiction.
All right, so you don't have to go before Conservation at all?
No, because the buffer shown is not planned, actually, the buffer line--
Okay, so you're set with that?
Yes.
Let me just see.
I'm sorry, may I just clarify? I did get an email from Mr. Murphy, and he said, "Please be aware, this office will be filing a determination with the Conservation Commission."
That's what I was wondering, because after reading it, it's still, there's some final resolution that has to come, whether it's a determination or whatever.
Yeah, he will be filing a negative determination based on the plan that shows that we are completely outside--
But there has to be a record. Since this is a quasi-legal board, as you know, we have to get all our ducks in a row. So, just want to make sure of that. And I would have a suggestion, Mr. Chair, that we treat the variance first, because without a variance, the rest is moot. The special permit cannot go forward. So, we have a new member here. And just for anybody who-- I know you have, Mr. Gonka, to the process before, but anybody who has not before, we can make any determination whether or not to grant on a variance as with a special permit. There has to be special findings that we have to make. And basically, it has to be based on-- the first finding has to be based on either the topography, the soil, the shape, or topography of the land. Second, it has to be a substantial hardship, not necessarily a financial one, but it could be because of the constraints of an unusual lot or that. And the granting of relief has to be such that it will not be substantially detrimental to the neighborhood or derogate from the intent of bylaw. Correct?
That's correct.
All right. So, and in order to do that finding under Chapter 20-- sorry. Wrong one, jumping ahead of time. So, those are the findings that we have to do. And now--
Just before we move forward with that, all the abutters were notified?
Yes.
Do we have any abutters here who want to speak about the project? Yea, yere, nay?
We did get email correspondence in your packet from Marita Tassi. She is the closest abutter, and she did send an email to the board indicating that she could not be present, however, she had no concerns.
I don't have a copy of--
Oh, I'm sorry, it's in the file, then, if I didn't--
Oh, okay, that's all right. No, that's all right.
So we had one abutter who responded, and they have no concerns.
That's correct.
Yeah. All right, let me just look at my notes.
Okay, do we have questions and discussion from anybody else on the board regarding granting a variance?
That parcel had come before us back about eight, 10 years ago?
2006.
2009, 2010 or something, wasn't it?
2009.
2009, yeah.
Should we have a history that the variance had been granted previously?
There was a history based on those criteria. So, knowing that, I don't have any problem granting the variance.
Well, the chair will entertain a motion.
Would you-- you want to do it, or would you like me to do it? Well, I didn't do it. All right, I'm going to defer to somebody else for that motion, I guess. Oh, go ahead. I'll let you do it.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
All right. Motion to grant the variance to Julie and Wayne Sudema at 114 Lane 10 to construct a 20-foot-by-20-foot addition onto an existing home in a 12-foot-by-16-foot deck and stairs within the side setback. That's about it. That the motion that it is consistent with Chapter 2005 and 2409 of disturbing zoning bylaws. Okay? I don't think we have to include the business about plans in that, because we're going forward with special permit next. So, that's sort of a redundancy, correct?
That's correct.
All right. Okay, at what point should we take a motion to close the public hearing?
No, we have to vote on the variance first.
After the variance, okay. Just making sure. We have a motion before the board to grant the variance. Do we have a second?
A second.
Okay. All in favor? Okay, all right.
I would make a motion to close the hearing if there's no discussion on--
The variance.
Okay, anybody want--
It's one public hearing. Variance and special permit was advertised as one.
So why do we-- yeah. So, you're not going to close it now till we do the special permit, correct? Since you said they rented as one?
Right, but normally you close the public hearing and then deliberate.
But we didn't close the public--
I know.
Yeah.
Proceed.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, all in favor of closing the public hearing?
No. So we have two public hearings, so we treating them as one?
It's one public hearing.
All right, so we still have a special permit, though, to get the motion on.
We have the special permit.
Right. No, but you close the hearing and then you vote on the permits.
Yeah.
Yeah.
All right. No, no, you don't get what I'm saying.
Oh.
All right, go ahead. I'm not running it. I'm just-- well, I guess my question was to show we're doing both.
Yes, you're doing both.
Jointly?
Yes.
All right, so you're closing both public hearings jointly?
It's one public hearing. So yes, you're closing the hearing and then voting on the--
We didn't do a special permit, though, yet.
We've approved the variance.
Right.
Well, we haven't done a special permit.
Right, but you normally close the hearing and then you vote on the-- because you stop taking public input when the board deliberates.
All right, I'm sorry, go ahead.
So we gave everybody an extra minute to--
That's right.
No, no, let's go, let's go.
So do we want to do a vote on the special permit, Jean?
Yes, please.
Okay, can somebody make that motion?
You want-- want to do--
Shouldn't we--
You're confused like I am--
No, but shouldn't we do--
Actually, I just, I did the finding on 2409.
Okay.
That's what I did.
All right, so I made the motion. Go ahead, can you go ahead?
Go ahead.
I make a motion to grant the special, the special permit requested by Julie and Wayne Sudema at 114 Lane 10 for the special permit to change in the non-conforming use to permit the addition to the existing house with a 20-foot-by-20 addition for the property located at 114 Lane 10.
I think I did that already. That's what I read. But I didn't make the motion to grant.
No, you made the motion for the variance.
I made the motion for the finding for the variance, but I didn't make the motion to grant the variance.
You made the motion for the, for the variance.
I made the motion to find. That's why I said 2409 and 2005.
2409 is special permit? That's why you were--
No, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I didn't say 24-- all right, let's go. Because I did cite to construct a 20-by-24 addition onto an existing home in a 12-by-16 deck with stairs within the side setback. Am I correct?
Yes, you did. Yes, you did.
All right, I did do it.
Yes, you did.
All right.
According to the plan--
Yes.
I think we're on special permit.
According to the site plan for Julie and Wayne Sudema, Lane 10, Sturbridge Mass, prepared by Robert G. Murphy and Associates, Inc., dated 6/4/2018, plant number C-18-16.
We have a second on that motion to grant the special permit?
A second.
We have a vote? All in favor? Any opposed? We have discussion?
No discussion. Can we vote?
Do we have further discussion on this? No further discussion? Okay, is there no further discussion?
Let me just suggest that it certainly passes the topography requirement.
Okay, so--
But that's all I have.
There is no further discussion, and we've all voted in favor. Are we in agreement on that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay.
Also, there is a 10-day appeal period from the date of granting.
20.
A 20.
20 days.
Oh, God. I had it all written down, so, and so, so I got thrown off on that. All right.
Okay, having stumbled through that process, but getting the job done like good townsfolk should, we do have another public hearing coming up at 7:25 PM. We'll be making that announcement in about 15 minutes.
So can we-- I was going to say if we can do the old and new business.
Yeah, I appreciate it.
Yeah, because we have--
Okay.
Oh, cool, yeah.
Sure, thank you. Thank you.
Under old or new business, whatever you want to deal with, on our applications for variances or for special permit, shouldn't we include that there is a 20-day appeal period?
It's on the decision, when they receive the decision. It's part of the decision, and then we do the certificate of no appeal, and that goes to the town clerk. So they get a copy of that.
But I mean, do you think it would be good for the public, you know--
Explain that when they come in, as we go through the process.
I know we had that discussion one time, that you, as a matter of fact, even suggested that we put that on the application.
I think, I don't think that we need to now, because we have the, you know, procedures that we have on there, and we have, you know, we kind of go through the process with everyone and let them know there is a 20-day appeal period, and then it's on the, the decision as well, so--
Here's another question. Because this came up a few times in discussion with other people, ask and make. According to Chapter 40, Master General Law, Chapter 40A, it just says that the appeal period is 20 days from the date of the granting. So is that calendar days?
It's calendar.
That's what I thought, but I think some people don't get that.
It's calendar days.
That's what I thought, because usually they specify if it's business days.
Right, yeah.
So it is calendar days.
Yes.
Rebecca, has our next meeting been decided?
Good question. You will not be here.
I cannot make August 15.
Is there-- I believe this can. Is there anyone else here that cannot make August 15?
Right now, I'm good, as they told me.
Okay, great, so we should be good. I just won't be here for that meeting. You could bring the crank.
No, I don't--
They'll be watching at home from TV, okay?
Yeah, right, right, I'll watch it, yeah. We'll all sit down and watch.
So our next meeting will be August 15 at 6:30.
Since we are actively discussing old and new business at this point in the meeting, we have 10 more minutes. Does anybody have anything else they'd like to bring up?
I would like to ask one, Jean, since we've got that business resolved with the motel and everything, as far as the 40B, when do you think they will start going ahead with the site work? With construction and that?
They're hoping to start this season, so the building plans have to be reviewed by the building commissioner, and they still have to receive their building permit. And they're also waiting for some final documents from the state, and then they'll be able to start construction.
So they still have to wait for something from the mess housing or something?
Right, that's right. It always takes a while on those finance packages.
I was trying to think about today. Now, the order of the way it was supposed to be built, was that going to be the second building, then the first, then the third? Or what was the sequence? Because I know it wasn't the one, like, 1, 2, 3, from front to back.
The buildings that are standing are going to stay--
Right, but then, no, I'm not talking about the apartments that are existing. I'm talking about the 3, 40B.
So they're going to build the one furthest back, and then the people that are-- and then they'll build the other one, and those people will be offered the chance to move into--
Right, so that's what I'm wondering, whether-- because we were referring to them as 1, 2, 3. Is it 2, 1, 3, or 3, 1, 2?
Don't hold me to what the numbers were--
I mean, no, because I had six inches of--
I think it's 3, 1, 2, is the way that it's going to be done. I think that was how.
Okay, that, yeah.
Yeah.
My recollection is it was 1, 3, 2. That the one on the street would be built first.
First.
Uh, no, that was not mine, because they wanted to go back further so you wouldn't see it. I thought it was 2, that was down deeper. That's why I thought it was 2. All right, do you remember?
I can peruse my--
No, don't bother, it's not that important. I was just, you know, after reading this, I was trying to remember. But we originally started with 157, went down to 103, and then wound up with 97 apartments.
Right, right.
Wow. All right.
Five minutes. Do you have responses to-- from everyone? This is the quiet, right, in this one? Yeah, but it's all different now, this, you know?
Phase one is the back. Phase two is the front. Phase three is the middle section. So it is building three and the parking lot.
Yeah.
Then building one.
Okay, I knew one was the second one, I didn't know.
And then the final phase is in the middle and that's when the two buildings will be demolished.
Right, so they're occupying the, yeah. Okay.
Okay.
Do we have any idea when ground is gonna be broken over there?
Probably not until they have a permit in hand. They may start putting up erosion controls and things like that first. That will take them a little while to do. But I'm sure that they're hoping for sooner rather than later.
What is the median income now for the forty B part of it?
I couldn't tell you offhand. So the last time we used the Metropolitan Statistical Area.
It was sixty-five thousand or something.
And I haven't had cause to look that up for anything lately, so... It's not something I look up every day.
No, I know.
Unless I need it.
Hey, Gene.
I'll be honest.
I still, I still think of that forty B, my God. Talk about baptism by hell, let me tell you.
That's what I did.
Right.
Hey, I did a bum job scheduling your agenda, huh?
Probably didn't expect it to go ahead as fast, huh? Not usually.
Not with a variance.
Well, it helped because we had, you know, it had become us before, you know? We've been up around that area so many times. There's not many places on Lane Ten, so...
In accordance with provisions of Mass. General Law Chapter Forty-A, Section Eleven, the zoning board of appeals will hold a public hearing at the center office building located at three oh-one Main Street on Wednesday, July eighteenth, two thousand eighteen, at seven twenty-five PM on the application of Eddie Wahid. The applicant is requesting a special permit pursuant to Chapter Twenty, Section twenty point zero five and Section twenty-four point zero nine of the zoning bylaw to allow for the relocation of the gas pump in Canopy and to move the gas tanks to the old Canopy location. Property is located at Forty Main Street. A copy of the application may be inspected at the office of the town clerk during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on this petition should appear at the time and place designated. Elizabeth Banks, clerk, Sturgis Zoning Board of Appeals.
Looking at this project, before you folks come up and start explaining what's going on, due to the scope of the project and the fact that the ground around there's been torn up for a long time and probably most of us drive by there about six times a day, first there were great big holes and then the holes were filled in and then there were tanks sitting on the ground and then there was excavating around the building and I'm sure the townspeople in general are all wondering, you know, what's happening? What's going on there? So in your presentation and for the public record, if you could just speak to your issues, what you ran into there when you started digging spaces for new gas tanks and why we need to move them and so on and so forth so that the townspeople are sure we're doing our job? And I'll turn the floor over to you folks to introduce yourselves and explain what's been going on there and what we're doing.
Attorney Henry Simonelli representing the petitioner. Eddie Wahid with me. The reason that the site is dug up is because the tanks were due to be replaced. They had a, what?
A single-stage steel tanks.
Right, and so they reached end of life, so they had to be changed anyway. Now is the time to consider the move if we're gonna do it.
It's actually from the state.
Right, right. So that's essentially what happened, you know? The idea is you gotta put the new tanks in now. So now if a change is gonna be made, now would be the ideal time to do it. So he went through and developed the plans that you see to move the pumping island over to the side and that actually reduces the non-conformity that exists now. The current non-conformity is... The setback at that location should be twenty-five feet from the front and it's currently at ten point eight feet. It would be actually moved back to eighteen feet from the front, the way it's laid out. So this actually improves the non-conforming situation. So we're making this request, it is a pre-existing non-conforming use. The request under Section Twenty oh-five would require that, you know, so long as it's not substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing non-conformity. In fact, it's an improvement to the neighborhood. It's a commercial district is the zone and its minimum requirements are a one-acre lot, hundred fifty-foot frontage, the twenty-five-feet front setback, which I mentioned, and a ten-foot side setback. The existing lot is two point six-two-three-three acres. They've got over two hundred feet of frontage and the, as I mentioned, the ten-point-eight-foot setback issue is now going to be corrected up to eighteen feet. And they've got existing parking that shows on the... We gave you three stages of the plan. We gave you the stage that shows what it is now and what it's proposed to be, including the third plan that shows the finishing touches for the landscaping included. So those are the three stages that you get to see. And as you can see, it'll add some energy to the area which really doesn't have much of anything there. This place has been a gas station since I've been driving, which I hesitate to say is a long time. And so it's, the use is the same. Although he is proposing for a store to come in and the, your regulation and as well as General Law Chapter Forty-A, Section Six, allows pre-existing non-conforming structure to be altered so long as it does not substantially, become substantially more detrimental. Your Twenty oh-five gives a layout of a baseline. As we've established, we told you what the baseline is, what's required and we had a lot is now, what the proposed change would do, the extent on which the proposed change would increase non-conformity with respect to each dimensional controls. So the actual non-conformity improves the dimensional control situation. So the proposed change will reduce the non-conformity somewhat by seven point two, two feet. And then the extent to which the proposal would increase the non-conformity with respect to required parking and loading. There's no proposed alteration of pre-existing parking except there will be an addition of a handicap area, which doesn't exist now. So there will be no increase there. There's no proposed increase in any other non-conformity. The only non-conformity that we're dealing with is the location of the pumping island and so there are no proposed other non-conformities to be altered here, except for what you see on the map. So I understand that we will, of course, be going through site plan review for other components of this, but at this stage, we have... Many of the apartments have sounded in indicating that there are no issues in that they don't find that this will be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood. Under your Twenty-four oh-nine, you have several criteria. Such use not detrimental to permitted uses in the zone. This is a commercial zone. Long-standing automobile service station and the existing site is within that area is developed for business uses. Nature of the operations shall be such that it will not be hazardous or create any danger. Traffic and pedestrian circulation on the site will be improved over the existing conditions with the new layout. Use shall be consistent insofar as practical, practicable with the comprehensive plan for future development of the area. Proposed use is consistent with the zoning and master plan, which encourages commercial use in this corridor. Provisions for roads, parking, laid out so as to prevent traffic hazards and nuisances. There are no concerns noted. Pedestrian walkway and sufficient appropriate parking layout are all provided for safe store for both vehicular and pedestrian traffic. And location nature, height of buildings, walls, fences, landscape, et cetera. The proposal is consistent with what's permitted and the proposed Canopy and Pump Island will be more in compliance than what it currently is. So it's an improvement to the area overall, besides the aesthetics, how nice it will look when it's finished. So we respectfully request a finding that it is not detrimental to the neighborhood.
Okay.
Just wanna make something clear. The land, I know you're concerned, probably you had in your question. We have the LSP report, so the land is clean and we had a copy and we give it to the fire department and all that. So, you know, it was done in stages. We took the tanks out, we had to dig the ground and we didn't want it to be filled with water, so we had to cover it up. But basically, one day I was driving by there and I looked at it, I said, "Well, leave it the way it is, you know, spending all that money." I think it's just a dream. I looked and I saw self-service gas station, different setup canopy. So I told them to stop and I wanna do it the way it is, you know? But everything was good and it was okay for me to put the tanks right there where they belong, but I decided to make it a little bigger and better.
Okay, so to summarize, we were doing something that we had to do under state law to replace the gas tanks and it seemed like a good opportunity to relocate the tanks in order to improve the facility overall, make it more conducive to business, better traffic flow, better appearance and so on and so forth. So having said that, I'll open up to the rest of the board for questions for either one of you. Go ahead.
Full disclosure, I do use Edwards Automotive. I've also used it when it was the previous owner, Mr. Jamal Ansakish. And I have to say, having had relatives in Sturbridge and this area from the time I was a kid, I do, and I did deal with Mr. Brogans when he owned the place and with, when it was Jack's Gas and so... I know the site and I have to say that these gentlemen and the reputation they have in South Bridge is superb. And I've had no problems with them. I have had with, in the past, not with your predecessor, not with Mr. Jamal, he was excellent. But having said that, I'm glad to see that building is down, the house is down because a dear friend, as you will remember, went right down from the chimney, down to the ground floor in that house and sustained a lot of injuries, one of the contractors in town. So I'm glad that's down and hopefully eventually the whole site will be cleared. And I think this will bring it more, make it a better flow, having the canopy moved and the tanks placed where they are. And I'm happy to see that there are now gonna be twelve parking spaces, two of which will be handicapped and also a little ramp going up to what is now used as an office. I know I've sat in there while other things were being done and my car was being serviced or something. So under full disclosure, if I, I just have to say that. So I don't think I have to step off or anything else.
For a good customer of the establishment, Mark, that's fine. That's good.
So that's it. I try to deal with people in town who treat you right.
Absolutely.
Okay, so having said that, and I mentioned my parking areas and that, so I think I'm pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah. I actually met Eddie last week at the neighbors and I'm dissuaded by him. You know, so I've gone through the plans and I think it's beautiful. You know, I completely agree with you. I think it's certainly much better flow and, you know, more gas stations certainly would not hurt. You know, the more competition we have, the better. So, but I do have one question. What's going on behind at the back, right? Because there seem to have been some kind of, some excavation there. So, you know, because when I drive by there and I see all that stuff at the back and I kind of wonder with the rains and all that, do you have any problems with erosion or water coming down or are you gonna do anything to the back of the building?
You're talking about where the house used to be?
Yes, you know, at the back.
That was to make the inspector happy, so I bought the land and knocked the house down.
Oh.
But it's an opportunity for me, it came out, so I took it. But definitely, you know, I won't spend the money once. When we started building the station, we'll do, you know, we'll make sure, whatever contractor we have, we'll make sure everything is secured and no sand or anything or the water going down or, you know, we'll make sure everything, you know, with the contractor, you know? If anything to be done right, we have to do it right, you know?
We'll be watching you because Mr. Young is pretty close by and I'm right down the road and you...
Yeah, and my other question, are you gonna increase the number of gas tanks seeing that you're increasing the number of pumps? You know, currently there are two pump stations with total of, what, four pumps currently? So now you're adding?
It used to be there before.
Yes, yes.
It used to be four, four gas pumps.
Yeah, so with the additional eight pumps?
Six pumps.
Six pumps.
Six?
Yes, adding a couple.
Okay, so are you gonna increase the number of gas tanks?
The tanks are actually on site, those two big green ones is there, that's what's gonna be.
Okay, that's it, okay.
Any other questions from anybody else on the board regarding this project?
Is we required to do anything with respect to the change of use if there's food sold? You're planning on opening a kind of a convenience store as a part of this project?
It's permitted in that zone. That's permitted in the commercial.
Yes. Do we need to call that out, that it's a change of use or anything in that regard?
No, because the retail is a permitted use, as Ms. Cooney said. They will be going through site plan review with the planning board, and they will need a retail food permit from the Board of Health.
Okay, and that's it?
Yeah.
Yeah, that was my understanding. If it's approved, you should take it through the site plan.
I have some correspondence, the letters that Attorney Simonelli presented to us from townspeople. We have a letter from resident Cecile Perot of 12 Newton Place, speaking highly of Rodney Wahib, and that she has no issues with the project at all. We have a letter from a Stephen Rich. No address given, but once again, fully supporting the project. We have a letter from a local businessman, Stephen Comtois of Green Light Driving School, again, giving a strong recommendation for this project. And then we also have a letter from Fazi Gantous of Three Woodside Circle, also, again, supporting the project and speaking very highly of the ownership of the garage and the entire operation. And that's what I have. Any other comments or questions?
The proposed hours of operation?
The original site, we used to open at 7:00 and close at 10:00. So I might just do like 6:00 and 10:00. I don't wanna go over after 10:00. Usually that street slows down.
Out of curiosity, this canopy is gonna be lit, and when you're closed, it's not lit anymore?
No, no, everything is, yeah, absolutely.
Okay, do we have any other correspondence? Is that yours?
Yeah.
Okay. We have other correspondence from the town. We have a letter from the Sturbridge Fire Department. The fire department has no major concerns. That's always good when you're talking about gas pumps. And the usual requirements for licensing, flammable storage, fire suppression system, and all other fire codes as per the state Fire Marshal's Office must be followed. But again, there are no issues with the fire department. We have a letter from the planning board just stating that if there are any resource areas, they must be protected, that stormwater must be controlled. This is from the Conservation Commission. And any additional work on other portions of the property will require prior approval from the Conservation Commission, but there is no opposition to the project. We have a letter from the building commissioner regarding the special permit. He's reviewed the file, doesn't believe the project is any more detrimental than what currently exists. And he will review to see if there are any building regulations that need to be addressed, but there is no opposition to the project. And then we have the Board of Health, Bree Eichstot of the Board of Health. The property is served by town sewer and town water. The convenience store will require a retail food permit. Plan review and pre-operational inspections will be required. If tobacco is to be sold, tobacco sales permit will be required. And there is no opposition stated here to the project. And then the chief of police has no public safety concerns regarding the petition for a special permit at 40 Main Street, and so on. And then we have a memorandum from our town planner, Jean Boubon, who is here this evening, outlining the plan, and includes some photographs of the site to the board, and comments about what's going on. And again, since Jean is here, we have no opposition to this plan from Jean.
No.
Okay. All right. That's it, any correspondence? Okay, so we have the project before the board. And when are we closing the public hearing now, after the first one? I wanna make sure we do this right. I'm gonna mull the temporary chair.
You do great. You'll be great. Motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion before us that's been seconded to close the public hearing. All in favor? Any opposition? Public hearing is now closed. So we now need to go forward with the special permit. Would anyone like to?
Are you looking at me?
Well, I don't care who makes the motion.
All right. Motion to find that the proposal by Eddie Wahib doing business as Edwards Automotive for property located at 40 Main Street, Sturbridge, Mass. 01566, to relocate gas pump, the gas pump canopy further south and further from the road, and to move gas tanks to the old Canopy location will not be substantially more detrimental to the neighborhood than the existing and is in accordance with Section 2409 A through E and Section 2005 of the zoning Sturbridge bylaw. So that's the motion to find.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded to approve the special permit.
All right.
That's the finding.
That's the finding, I'm sorry.
That's the finding.
Okay. All in favor of approving that finding? Any discussion? Seeing no further discussion, it looks like we're all in agreement on this process. Okay, thank you.
Now we need a motion.
Okay, and we need a motion now to grant the permit.
All right, motion to grant. The special permit requested is outlined in the application and documentation provided as shown on plan titled Site Plans, Three Sheets. Sheet number two of three showing improvements at an existing service station prepared by Ashkar Engineering, 70 Washington Street Suite, 306 Haverhill, Massachusetts, 01832, dated June 8, 2018. Project number 18-02-10. No revision shown.
Need a second?
If approved, all necessary permits shall be obtained and filed prior to any construction.
I'll second.
You second that?
Yeah.
Dallas, I didn't hear you.
I second it.
Okay. Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor?
Discussion.
Discussion, discussion. Any further discussion on this permit by the board? Okay, all right, all in favor? Any opposed? Okay.
Lots of luck.
Yeah, thank you.
It's been a long time since I've seen you, Mr. Simonelli. I don't know if you remember me. Dr. Simonelli's neighbor. You're still at the same location. I used to work at Dudley Court and saw you there years ago. Of course, I was a lot younger and less wrinkled.
Before we motion to close the meeting this evening, do we have business on the agenda for August 15?
Is that our next meeting?
Yes.
August 15.
Determination.
Lots of luck.
And...
Good night.
Potentially a special permit, but we haven't received the application yet.
So we do definitely have business in August?
Yes, yes.
A special permit, do you think?
Potentially.
Potentially.
Yeah, the job or engineering was waiting to hear back from the applicant.
We did cover all the new business during the breaks between the hearings, but before we close the meeting, is there anything anybody else would like to say or comment on before we do that?
Here we can, to welcome our two members back again, and lots of luck, and hope you'll be here for a long time.
I'd like to say Michael, you did a fine job running the meeting.
Yeah, I gotta remember that discussion part.
That's okay. You did good, did good.
If I remember the discussion part, do I get a gavel? Something I can bang?
No, I don't know.
Who usually runs the meetings?
Don't push it.
You need to reorganize, so the chair, one of you has actually taken the prior chair's seat. So he was one that chose not to run for reelection. So you'll reorganize. If we had had a full board tonight, we would've done it tonight.
No, he did.
So in the next meeting, we won't have a full board. So I would say in September, we'll reorganize. So Michael, if you could run the August meeting again? It'll be just fine.
I'll try. Just gonna put a little sticker on my forehead that says discussion.
It doesn't matter, if Liz is here, the two of you could toss a coin to see who will do it, you know.
Yeah, I'd like to thank everybody. And Marge, as usual, you're amazing.
Put a tattoo on your forehead.
It's marvelous to have you here.
It's good to have us.
That's gonna be a huge help.
Yep.
With all your experience. And anybody wanna make a motion to close the meeting?
I'd make a motion to close the meeting.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. All in favor of closing the meeting?
Good.
We are adjourned.
Good time.